Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is the regular weekly meeting of the Mobile City Council for Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Please stand as we are led in the invocation by Pastor Leon Bell Jr. of St. Joseph Baptist Church and remain remaining afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. God, we come before your throne lifting up the city of Mobile, the mayor, and this council, Lord. We ask you to bless today's meeting, Lord God. We thank you, God, that your eyes are upon the city of Mobile, your ears are inclined to hear our prayers. We ask your blessings today upon the city, elected officials, every resident, bits, and government entity in the city of Mobile, Lord. We thank you, God, that you, your presence rests here, that you continue to lead this council and this mayor, God, in a way that is pleased for you, Lord God. We speak blessings, prosperity, and unity above the city of Mobile. In this name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask before we continue, if you would observe a moment of silence for several reasons. I've been asked by several residents of the community that we would lift up in a moment of silence the life and loss of any law enforcement official. We know that there's been a recent loss in North Alabama. We've had to go through that twice here in our neighboring state, Mississippi. Just across this country, I've got an email asking from a viewer who watches this particular meeting that we would observe a moment of silence for all of those families and individuals lost. For Mr. Isaac White Senior, owner and proprietor of the Wada College, funeralized yesterday, 99 years old, a great Mobilean touched the lives of hundreds, if not thousands, of persons here in the community. Just was a true entrepreneur and a true advocate for those whose lives needed a reintroduction. And let's remember him in our prayers. And then, Deacon Fred Reed, longtime deacon at the St. Joseph Baptist Church of Mobile and the Mount Sinai Baptist Church of Mobile, just a great Mobilean in general. I believe he was advanced of 90 years old. He's a longtime great citizen. We could remember both our law enforcement, Mr. White, and Deacon Reed, Deacon White as well, and Deacon Reed. It'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, that was kind of weak. Good morning.
Morning.
At the C, all right.
It's all right.
See and hear all of you here. This morning, the rules of the council are as follows. First, we'd ask you please turn off of silence all of your electronic devices when entering the meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in, indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, public hearing agenda item, before entering the meeting. Addressing the council, we ask that the speaker clearly state for the record both your name and your mailing address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on an agenda item must contact the city's office on a Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak. And you will have to do that by two o'clock. Anyone who hadn't followed that procedure won't be allowed to address the council. All speakers, for today's meeting, every speaker will be granted three minutes. We're having to expedite things so that we can attend to a luncheon that all of us are committed to being at. Also, you'll have three minutes. At the end of two, your bell will sound, letting you know that you have one additional minute for summary. When that bell sounds again, that's your indicator that your time to speak has ceased. We ask that all personal address, that there be no personal address, and that all comments, questions, statements be made to myself, who serves as chair. And if any council member would like to offer commentary, they will certainly be granted an opportunity. To maintain decorum, we ask that there be no undue applause and/or public outcry during the course of this meeting. Those are rules, and we are certainly appreciative of your interest in your municipal government. Madam Assistant City Clerk.
Clerk. Approval of minutes of the meeting on May 14th. So moved, second?
Probably move to second. Any discussion? A great job as always. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minus or approve?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Good morning.
Good. So, my first order of business this morning, I would like to recognize our friends from the Coast Guard for recent action. I'd ask them all to come forward, and Captain Sasser, if you would actually introduce them, then I'll read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm the commanding officer of the Coast Guard Aviation Training Center out in West Mobile off Tanner Williams Road. We've got a couple of our leadership and one of our worker bees, if you will, with us today. He's one of the air crew members that the mayor's going to speak about shortly, Petty Officer Dalton Lynch. And I have Chief Wes Plow, who's our leading chief, responsible for engineering coach, and then the command manager chief, Tim Monahan, who's actually going to be retiring here in about three days, after 30 years of service. So, thank you very, very much.
And counting.
All right, then, I'll read this proclamation to tell the story. On April 8th, Tommy Goldman attempted to pawn several stolen items in Mobile. The pawn shop alerted MPD, who discovered Goldman had warrants in Ballarat County and Mississippi. Officers arrived at the scene and Goldman fled. During the pursuit, he opened fire on MPD personnel and caused damage to private property. Goldman's accomplices were apprehended, but he remained at large. The next day, a manhunt ensued with the assistance from several jurisdictions. Coast Guard ATC went above and beyond in rendering assistance to the MPD as they executed the manhunt. Captain William Sasser, commanding officer, directed resources, including a Coast Guard helicopter, to assist in the pursuit. The helicopter not only followed the subject in his stolen vehicle as he attempted to evade the coordinated manhunt, but they stayed above his location even after he wrecked and attempted to hide in a wooded area. The Coast Guard's immediate dedication to excellence and unwavering commitment to the safety of the city of Mobile is exemplary of the Coast Guard's motto, "Simple Peratus", "Always Ready." Mobile is proud to be a Coast Guard city, and we are proud to thank and recognize Coast Guard ATC for their tireless efforts. Signed, the city of Mobile, this 21st day of May 2019. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Williams.
You know, when we talk about most of our military, armed forces, and those who serve us in uniform, we think about somebody going somewhere else, doing something, somebody somewhere we maybe have never heard of, way, way from our borders. But these guys right here, every day, every day are in the air doing something that is protecting the folks that are on the water, and as we find out now, everywhere within the reach of our aircraft. And so, guys, I salute you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We're proud to be part of the Mobile community. You know, this is a Coast Guard city, and that's not an easily threshold to get a hot cross. There's only a handful throughout the street. But we're proud partners. Our 650 employees we have here in West Mobile live all over the Mobile regional area, and we're just proud to be here. And I think this is just a nation of decades of partnership building and relationship building, and we look forward to strengthening that even further as we go forward.
Very good. You know, to my knowledge, this is the only time that we've had a fugitive, and we really worked closely together, where Aviation Training Center personnel were in a helicopter hovering, hovering, and then when they got to a certain point, they were trying to flush this guy. And the Director Barber said, "How close to deck can you get?" And I think they said, "We can get right down on it." And I think that prop wash made him come out of there, and that's how they caught the guy. So, thank you much.
It's like rabbit hunting, Mr. Mayor.
That's right.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you again.
And I see some of our police officers, Captain Cunningham, he was here. But anyway, he was here representing the MPD. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So, I will be leaving shortly to write my speech for the state of the city. And I'm sorry that I have to leave soon. No, I've already written that speech, but I will.
We hope so.
We'll see y'all back here next week after I leave. So, thank you very much.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved as a second in discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. Today is the appeal of Kenneth O'Handlon concerning the Architectural Review Board's denial of his application for a stank wooden fence seven feet in height at 52 South Julia Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to offer any commentary relative to this appeal? Not the appeal is closed.
Request of Andrea Ramos for a waiver of noise ordinance at 1942 La Pine Drive on May 25th from 10:00 p.m. Motion.
Is there a motion?
To both.
Second. Is any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or the request is granted?
Mr. Vice President, we didn't vote on the appeal, so.
I move, I move to approve the appeal of Ms. Handlon.
Second.
Any discussion?
We have to get a sound.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The appeal is, well, he's appealing, he wants a denial.
What?
Well, I want to make certain, no, let's revisit that, because I'm in favor of what the Architectural Review Board wanted to do.
And that's what we just did.
Right. He wanted to appeal that.
Right. He wanted to appeal that.
So, we're denying the.
We want to deny.
We're trying to set aside the decision of the Architectural.
Right. And we didn't vote for his appeal.
So, we're not in favor of that.
Right. So, Mr. Daves made the motion in the affirmative.
Right.
His motion failed, so the appeal is denied.
There we go. Great. Okay, that's taken care of. Yes, ma'am.
Public hearing. Today's a public hearing to determine if the structure at 1961 St. Stevens Road, also known as 1951 St. Stevens Road, is a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to, this particular public hearing, 1961 St. Stevens? If not, our hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Dalton Bond doing business as modern name.
Is there anyone here that would like to offer any commentary on this particular public hearing? Not the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Joseph Seymour Jones.
And I'd like to remind that we're offering three minutes if we could make that adjustment today. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Appreciate this opportunity to address our governing board body, as we respect those entities that are necessary in the modern age. I am Joseph Seymour Jones. I live at what your record shows in the county revenue commission as 1500 St. Stevens Road. And that posed a problem for 911 digitizing, because the deed is the only place that shows my correct address, which is 1464 St. Stevens Road. I have raised those issues previously with the calls going to Pritchett and have outlined, in fact, the reason why. The runs from 1500, which is a dead address, that was with Ms. Jones. I'm approaching you now to resolve the matter, where by 1464, it will only appear on a deed, which I've had to get certified copies and bring forward, and Montgomery Department of Revenue has ruled on. So, I'm raising an issue now about the proposed park at that address with no zoning changes, no notice to the home, just as you're going to demolish 1961 St. Stevens Road, which was also known as 1951. I'm faced with the same dilemma at the address. So, I brought items to you as far as claims go. My mother's health care was affected. She was delivered to the Mobile infirmary. I did the best I could to administer that. I preferred you to stay, but your contract let that happen. I would have had to have delivered her myself or called lifeguard. That would be the services available. So, we've outlined those things to the understanding I've been able to give answers to here. She died in February of 17, but her health care was my issue on December 18 of 15. And her being delivered to the infirmary made me look like an imposter, because the house addresses 36 numbers than the lot address. So, we have some issues that I'd like to get resolved with you on that. And so, I would like to know, they're going to be in the zoning changes there for that park? Is it still on track for that location at Congress St. Stevens and Catherine Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When is the project going to be completed and/or started?
Well, we are increasing the scope of the project to some degree. Also, we're hopeful that before summer of 2020, the project would have started and commenced.
Is there any effort to resolve the claims of the city to my mother's lot?
No.
You're not going to resolve it?
We feel it's been resolved.
Okay. Well, do you have a copy of the map from '98? Because the county map currently shows her owning that vacant lot, which the house is not owned.
Right.
And the '98 map could not be produced by the county.
Yes, sir.
I have the only evidence that I could find, and that was done when this issue came up back in 1998 with Habitat for Humanity. Now, the.
Which bell is that? That's the three minutes.
That's fine. I've given you the outline of question, and I would have concerns about. I would hope that the Board of Equalization meeting can resolve the two addresses for that at home, and that we can get a resolution with your engineering department as to which address got digitized. Was it 36610 Pritchett or 3661, 36603, 1464?
Well, Mr. Jones, we appreciate it. It might have been the one 36672 from Chickasaw, but we're going to get all of that resolved.
I just appreciate it. In case I have a call to you and you have to take me.
100%. 509-4239. Thank you for coming. Yes, sir.
Amber Guy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Amber Guy, publications officer for the Mobile Public Library, and I live at 1161 Old Shell Road. I'm here today with Emmy Powell, our children's librarian at our West Regional branch. We're here to tell you all about our summer reading celebration. We're kicking off on Saturday, June 1st, from 10:00 to noon at the Ben May Main Library and West Regional Library. We do this and bring library staff from all the other locations so we can have a big party. So, Tolmanville Parkway staff will be at Main. Sims, Sarah Land staff, Theodore Oaks will be at West Regional. So, we're so excited. And the reason we do the summer reading program is to help with the summer slide. I've given you a handout on that, why it's so important. In addition to the free programming, and we had more than 28,000 kids participate in over 2,000 programs in an eight-week period last summer. So, we're hoping to beat that goal this year. In addition to families coming to the programs, daycare centers come. We have more than 100 planning to participate this year. We also provide deposit collections that live at those daycare centers that are filled with, that are curated specifically for the ages at that daycare center. So, we are super excited about it, and I'm going to let Emmy tell you all more.
Hello. I'm Emmy Powell. I live at 28 McPhillips Avenue. I'm excited to be here today to share with you about our summer reading celebration. Of course, we're busy year-round out at the library, but the summer's where we really pull out all the stops and try to get the kids in the library. At West, our kickoff party is planned as an out-of-this-world glow party. So, we're going to transform our meeting room into a glow-in-the-dark extravaganza with crafts and face painting. And like Amber said, we'll be collaborating with the other branches to make that an all-party. We had almost 700 attendees last year, and we're looking to beat that this year. Like Amber mentioned, we have weekly performers. We have two sessions, one for the childcare centers, one for the general public. We're happy to be able to reach those childcare center children who may not be able to get to the library otherwise. In addition to weekly performers, we have many fun programs planned. We'll keep up favorites like Lego Club, chess, movies, arts and crafts, but we'll be adding programs to go along with the space base of the summer reading program. We'll be making galactic slime. We'll be recreating phases of the moon with Oreos, creating star stabs, making our own spaceships. We're also excited to be offering two six-week programs to get children ready for school called Preschool Prep and Kindergarten Countdown. We've designed these programs to help children get ready to write, read, and work on social skills necessary for success at school. We'll continue to offer 10 story times a week for babies and up, and we'll be adding a couple of special pajama story times to encourage families to come to the library in the evening and maybe reach some families. All of these activities are meant to draw the children in for fun, but it's really an opportunity for us to get books in the hands of children, which we know to be the best, best ode to the summer slide. Thank you for your time.
If I may ask, I know I put a link into the libraries for people then to peruse your website, but if you have a flyer that we could put in about the summer slide and what plans the libraries are doing to, because parents are looking for things to do with their kids this time of year.
Yeah, we'll get the flyer that we've given.
If you'll get it to Deidra, that would be terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
And Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Quiver.
Amber, don't forget the adults. When I was at the library last week, they entered me into the contest.
Yes.
And gave me the flyer on all of these books that I can choose from to be a part of the adult.
Yes. This year, and it's, we talked a little bit about in the newsletter that I gave you guys, but this year, we're doing something new with the adults. We're challenging adults to read eight different genres in the eight weeks. So, it's a pretty big challenge.
I know. I have to get busy.
But we're excited to offer that. And something that's really good for families to do is maybe admit to 20 minutes as a family sitting down and reading together. You don't necessarily have to all read the same book. You can just be spending reading time either. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to try not to tell them that challenge.
Gary Smith regarding the record ordinance.
Mr. Smith?
How y'all doing this evening?
Now, we want to make certain, prior to speaking, Mr. Smith, we're going to hold this item over an additional week.
Okay.
While we'll have the three minutes certainly here today.
Well, I mean, if you're going to hold it over, I mean, that's fine, but I mean, that's your, so other words, we're not going to discuss it or as far as.
Well, we're not going to vote on it today.
Any suggestions or anything?
Still have an additional week to offer, any commentary you want to offer, but you certainly have your three minutes.
All right. Well, just so y'all have something to look at, you know, between now and next week. They're proposing to go from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but the, yeah, but see, they haven't given us anything. They are not communicating with us.
That's the reason we're holding it over.
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have a deal.
We don't have the updated version either, so there's some discrepancies from what you have currently and what's in this agenda packet, but the correct item will be ready for dissemination shortly, and we'll vote on it next week.
Can you, right, can you give it?
Yes, I've given them my email. I've given my phone.
Give it to Assistant City Clerk here, and I assure you that before this evening, you'll have the correct version, and you'll have all of our information. If you want to share with us any perspectives, please feel free to do so.
Right. And I did receive a text, but it was when we were meeting in pre-conference from Public Safety Director Barber, and he too said that being out of town, he has not viewed every change, but, and he wanted that continuity as well.
Okay. Another thing that's under concern with these other company owners that are here, as of tomorrow, we're under the handling that Pitts and Sons will be taking over all impounds for the city of Mobile. And we're wanting to know how come we wasn't involved when all of this is having to pertain to the ordinance? We're a lot smaller company than what Pitts and Sons is, but yet they've handed them the contract to tow the inbound starting as of tomorrow. We've not given anything to them to submit a contract on or anything. Yes, ma'am, it is part of the ordinance, because it's in there.
It hasn't come, we haven't voted on this ordinance yet. So, if that's part of the new ordinance, I don't believe that could start.
No, this hasn't even been sent out for bid or anything. We were not aware that we had to.
That's, that would be totally administrative. Mr. Woods, would you like to offer anything on this particular inquiry?
Not in particular. No, I would rather let the council go ahead and disseminate what they're going to disseminate.
Well, I tell you what, when you, when you offer your concerns that you might to our Assistant City Clerk, please include that, and we will make the necessary inquiries to the administration to see if we can address your concern.
All right.
That would be, and you all are welcome. Again, you had, how much time does he have now? Well, your time is about expired now.
But that's fine. I mean, that's just a couple of the main things.
Sure. Yes, sir.
And I'll get with y'all again next week.
That'll work.
And you'll email me whatever they're going to come up with?
But what I can assure you, we brought up in today's pre-council, the concern for the small operator, that there's certainly a support on this council to make certain that the vitality of the small towing operator is preserved. I'm interested in what your concerns are, and we'll see what we can do to address them.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming.
Alan Luther regarding the record ordinance.
That'll be fine. And I should, you know, we're kind of expediting things today, but everybody will have their full time next week. Let us know what your concerns are so that we can hopefully address them.
Can we all give her her?
100%. And if you, Ms. Assistant City Clerk, could you make sure that we have those emails so that we might communicate if necessary?
Mr. Wilson. Reggie Hill is the next speaker.
Well, we're going. Well, we might, might make it three minutes. Reggie Hill amendment. Thank you all again for coming. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Hill, you could be making your way on down.
I was looking at the email sign.
Right, but you could be making your way on down. You could be making your way on down, Mr. Hill.
Yeah, they're doing something, we're not paying, we're listening to you. They're just giving email addresses.
Mr. Hill, what do you want to speak on?
I'm going to be speaking today regarding the grant that the administration is seeking to apply for from the U.S. Department of Justice. It's actually in the consent resolutions being introduced, item 31-487. Mr. Chapman, to the members of the council, in the absence of, to the administration, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Centrist Street. Before I want to stand in concert with the council and send a sentiment to Mr. Isaac White and condolences to his family as well, he's a pioneer for our area and definitely inspiration for those of us who are entrepreneurs. This morning, there was a question asked in regards of 31-487, but there was not any comments for the administration, just for the general public, as to authorize a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice for fiscal year 1918 law enforcement crime gun intelligence center integration initiative, $750,000. In the grant, it says that the objective, deliverables, the primary objective of a CGIC is to develop leads that will identify armed violent offenders for investigation and prosecution. It goes on to say that it should be a collaborative effort between the city, entities within the city, and the local law enforcement agency that is applying. It also talks about the reward. It also talks about the awardees, what we require of them, and the first piece, which I found the most interesting, and I think will probably be the most important, is a collaborative working group. I don't believe that we found where in times past that we haven't had the resources to tackle such issues. I think just the allocation of sources and how we've been able to put them in place is what has been the issue. We had an amazing presentation today from the Mobile Public Library. I hope that that would be one of the groups that is allowed to come on. We know that third-grade reading scores determine the prison population, and we know that as well. We are 30% over capacity in the city of Mobile already. It goes on to say within the fifth requirement for an awardee is violent crime prevention strategies. What we've seen the most of over the past years, particularly in this area, and you can argue all across the country, we've been very reactive when we're facing these issues versus being proactive and putting solutions in place that would prevent these type activities. I would encourage before accept such a grant that we will ensure that the administration is able to put a plan in place where we use objectives that have already worked, that have already been in place to turn around those individuals who are likely to commit criminal activities, who are likely to have done violence within their lives, who are likely to do these things that we're spending resources to take care of. And I would commend the administration and the chief of police for seeking our resources to actually do something about this. But once again, we've had resources in places before, but it's about the planning and the strategy of how to actually do something. So I encourage you to encourage the administration to present that and allow them to answer questions that the public may have, and those who would like to assist with ensuring that we present public safety as a dire need in the city of Mobile. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Ordinance is held over, 63012. I'm in Chapter 63 of the Mobile City Code, returning to rates for record service.
Hold over one week.
Second?
Probably move to second in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, items held over.
Consent resolutions held over, 37455. I recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, Table Wine, off-premises only, licensed for City Market Chevron.
Live one week. Second? Probably move to second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, items held over.
37456, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, off-premises only, licensed for Simply Seafood on Three Nut Road.
So moved. Second, in the discussion, not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, item is passed.
CIP resolutions held over, 21480, authorized contract with John G. Walton Construction for Granite Hills drainage improvements.
So moved.
Second in the discussion. This is a great project, and I'm glad to see it move forward. All ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, item is passed.
Resolutions held over, 01479, 21481, and 21482, authorized preliminary engineering, utility, and construction agreement with the state of Alabama for roundabout installation at Canal Street and Broad Street, with Southern Earth Sciences for Hickory Street Landfield, and for Southern Earth Sciences for Bates C&amp;D Landfield.
So moved.
Second?
Probably move to second in the discussion. I'd just like to remark that item 01479 is a transformative project, gonna have the first roundabout east of our 65. Many of the concerns communicated by city residents have been included in this particular plan, and I'm glad to see... You know, we've been talking about the target plan for four or five years. We're finally going to see, hopefully, some boots on the ground as we begin to transform the Broad Street and the MLK Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue corridors. So I'm appreciative of this project. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, projects passed, items passed, really.
Consent resolutions introduced for the first time, 03483 through 31487.
I'm asking to suspend the route for me to consideration a resolution, 03483 through 31487.
Second.
Probably move to second in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, items passed.
I'll take these all together if there's no objection.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
03483, appoint Andre Rathley to the Architectural Review Board. 08484, approve purchase orders for acquisitions over 7,500 for the week of May 13. 0885, approve item-based bids, swimming pool chemicals. 4486, declare the structure at 1961 St. Stevens Road, also known as 1951 St. Stevens Road, a public nuisance and order it demolished. 31487, authorize grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice for the fiscal year 19, local law enforcement, crime, gun, intelligence center integration initiative.
So moved. Second.
Probably move to second in the discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, items passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced first time, 21488 through 21492.
I'm asking to suspend the route for me to consideration a resolution, 2488 through 21492.
492 be held over by council.
Right. Does the motion, is it second?
Second.
Probably move to second, in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed.
I'll take these all together. 21488, authorized contract with Neil Shachet for Granite Hills drainage improvements. 21489, authorized contract amendment with Hutchinson, Moore &amp; Roush for Hackmire Park drainage repair improvements. 21490, authorized contract with Thompson Earring for 2017 CIP McGregor Avenue sidewalks. 21491, authorized contract with Skipper Consulting for intersection improvement design for Cottage Hill Road and Hillcrest Road.
So moved. Second.
Probably move to second, in the discussion.
Very briefly, 21491, I would just like to let the community know that that is actually a consultant design contract, which will be looking at signalization on Hillcrest Road, which is Christopher Drive, and also on Cottage Hill and Hillcrest, and Cottage Hill and Lloyd's Lane. The traffic lights will be hopefully synchronized with additional allocations that have already been secured through the CIP program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rich. Any further discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, items passed.
Resolutions being introduced the first time, 01493 through 6504.
These resolutions, by council rules, will be held over for one week.
Announcements?
Ms. Gregory from the Great Seventh District.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you.
From the Great Sixth District.
Thank you. First, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Memorial Day weekend. Stay safe, have a good time, and please remember all service people, and especially those that gave... Or actually, this holiday is to remember those that gave the ultimate sacrifice from the military service, again, veterans Memorial Day weekend. Speaking of a very fun event, will be the ribbon cutting for the splash pad at 9:30 at Medal of Honor Park. And I invite colleagues, and I understand the mayor has a conflict, but Anitra Henderson with Director of Civic Engagement will be representing his office. So I hope everyone comes out to enjoy that really fun event. Thank you.
Let's hear from Mr. Daves from the Great Fifth District.
Thank you so much, Vice President Manzi. As Councilwoman Rich has indicated, Memorial Day is the day we set aside to remember the sacrifices, in many cases, the ultimate sacrifices of those men and women who not only won our freedom almost 240 years ago, but have sustained it and protected it in the years since. So have a great time this weekend, but take a few minutes with you and your family to remember those men and women. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daves. Let's hear from Mr. Williams from the Great Fourth District.
Thank you very much, and good news coming out of the Great District Two, where McGill Tulane is located. I have the privilege of having a son on the state champion 7A baseball team, first ever in the history of the school. I don't know how old that school is. It's much older than even Fred. And it's... What a great, great deal. And I want to give a shout out to the one and only media that showed up for that grand event. I mean, I'm talking, this is once in the lifetime of the entire school. We had two schools up there, one playing softball, Baker, and we had McGill Tulane contesting Bob Jones for the state championship. One TV station showed up, one TV station, no other news, and that was Fox 10. And so to Bree, who was there all weekend, a shout out, and thank you very much from me. This was... What a great day in Mobile. I'll hold all to next week. Thank you.
Let's go back to Ms. Rich, who wants to mention the Pops concert on Saturday.
Yes, I apologize. Yes, the Pops concert up at Medal of Park is on Saturday, May 25th for the weekend as well, so please join that. That's a free concert, and it's at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Let's hear now from Mr. CJ Small from the Great Third District.
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. I will hold my comments and announcement until next week, but I'd like to wish everyone a happy and a safe Memorial Day. Thank you.
That's great. I will now hear from Mr. Frederick Douglas Richardson Jr. from the Great First District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to first of all address the issue of age. Lord called Noah to build the ark in the sixth chapter of Genesis. He was 600 years old. She ever want to put in his perspective? Now, yesterday I had the opportunity to go back to my hometown. The Hillcrest High School held its baccalaureate ceremony for the graduating class. They invited me to come back home to be the baccalaureate speaker, and I enjoyed that. And you know, the Bible say that a prophet is without honor excepted. It is about unaccepting his own home, but I was... I went back home and I thought they rolled out the red carpet. Everything went well. In terms of my announcement, I would like to announce that I will be holding my District One Trinity Gardens Community Meeting on June 20th, Thursday, June 20th, in the Dodge Community Center, starting at 6 o'clock. And I'm trying to get ahead of this because I don't want anybody to say that they didn't know that we were having a meeting. So I'm giving the citizens plenty of time to make plans to attend this important meeting. I had a person call me a couple of weeks ago from the Trinity Gardens Community, and she asked me, "When are you gonna do something for Trinity Gardens?" And I said, "Ma'am, I can only surmise that you're a new resident." I said, "I don't believe you have been in the community long." So I started numerating the various things we were doing, and she never did speak. I didn't hear anything else. Because when you go to these other cities, there's no such thing as a council member coming inside, bringing the government inside of a neighborhood for the citizen to listen and hear from the citizen. It's unheard of. It's taking the government to the people. And... But anyway, I want all the citizens to come... One of the things we're going to do, we're going to discuss the ditches. We're going to announce what ditches we're going to be closing this year. We're going to announce all of the additions coming to the Trinity Gardens Park. And I hope you all would be excited to hear all of this, but at all of my meetings, I'm going to bring companies that's offering employment. We're going to have Oster in the house. We want a Walmart Distribution Center in the house. And in case you claim that you don't have the skills to get one of the jobs, I'm going to have Bishop State in the house that's gonna pay you cash money to train. They're gonna pay you to train. My point to that is, it should not be no excuse. So when they ask me, "What am I gonna do about jobs?", I say, "No. What are you gonna do about jobs? If you know where one is, you better go get it." Because I'm bringing everything I know about jobs inside the community, giving this information to the citizens, and from that point on, it is up to you. If it is to be, it is up to me.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I want to start my announcements by recognizing a great law enforcement official.
All right.
And the person of Major Linda Timms. Let's recognize her. Let the record reflect that she is alive and well. I have not heard from her in about 20 years. And so I just... I'm so glad to lay eyes on her and to recognize her for her distinguished career in law enforcement here in the city of Mobile. Thank you for being here. We will be announcing hopefully on next week the groundbreaking for the MLK Avenue basketball complex. We have several recreational amenity improvements across District Two. I want to have groundbreakings for all of them because I think it's important that the citizens see how active we are in trying to make these improvements and invest their tax resources through the council's CIP program initiated four years ago. It has been a groundbreaking effort, making improvements across the length and breadth of the city, not just downtown. You see, a lot of cities put a lot of attention on their downtown and neglect their adjoining neighborhoods. That has not been our approach. I'm appreciative of all the city employees, the assistance that the mayor's offered, and the strength, courage, and conviction it took of this council to continue that penny sales tax so that we could work to improve all areas of the city. A lot of councils across this country would not have endeavored to do that, but we did, and I'm appreciative of that effort. Community meetings, I don't have all of it scheduled right now, but I look forward to having four, which will bring me up to 73 community meetings, since I've had the privilege of representing the finest citizens of this community, which is District Two. Look forward to engaging with you, but in the meantime, I'm not hiding. I'm on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, 5094239, lmanzimobile.org. I'm working for you in District Two. Any further announcements of this council?
Yes, I would just like to nominate District One. If you ring, I will spring.
Sounds like a winner. Come on, CJ. Come on.
They ring before a district is be closed. Where you at?
I hear you. Mr. Williams?
All right. 24-hour response guaranteed.
Sounds like a winner. Oh, come on, Ms. Gregory.
If you're in seven, you are in heaven.
All right. Come on, Ms. Rich. Come on.
Oh, boy. Let's see, District Six, the best there is.
Okay. All right. Come on, Mr. Daves.
Keeping it alive in District Five.
And you know I'm working for you in District Two. Any further comments on the council? This is... Any motion?
Motion to adjourn.
It's probably a motion, second in the discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I hear you, Ben.